Alrighty, alright. Role call, we have Scott Hatcher.
Here.
Jared Bramerson.
Here.
Mitch Hostin.
Here.
Tyler Munson.
Here.
Terry Moyer.
Here.
And James Coyle.
Here.
Very, uh, currently at this.
Alright, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, proof of posting, a copy of the notice was delivered on 7:30.
This note bearing his rise.
Okay. On 7:30, it was faxed to the Star News, posted in Black Earth Municipal Building, and the Black Earth Post Office, posted on the webpage, www-blackearthwisconsin.com, and faxed for posting to the State Bank of Cross Plains Black Earth branch. Public comment. Somebody from the public?
And no one online.
And no one online, okay. Item five, discussion action on village audit 2020 presentation. Brian.
Thanks, I'm again Brian Anderson from Whitley. Here to kind of go over the audit briefly and more importantly just be available for questions if you have them. So this is our first year doing the audit, so everything went well this first year and appreciate all the cooperation we got. So, said I don't think I thought in front of you or not, but I can kind of briefly highlight a few things I noted. Obviously this is eight or nine months past, but you guys have made a lot of things there, but just some things that we typically look at in an audit, I guess. Um, yeah, page one there is our opinion. And actually that's what you hire us to do, is give an opinion on your financial statement, so it kind of describes management's response for us. And then we kind of designed tests to make sure everything is fairly presented in all material respects. And then a summary there on the top of page two, it's an unmodified clean opinion, so everything is fairly presented based on the testing we did. Um, there is some required supplementary information in there related to budgetary schedules and the retirement system. And then the last paragraph says you don't do management discussion analysis, which is pretty common for a village this size. It doesn't really add that much value, there's not too much in the financials, so nothing to get worked up about with that. Uh, when you look at the financial statements, there's two sets of financial statements there. One has fixed assets and debt, and then the other one's more of a current focus without this information in there. Um, usually at the first set of financials, we kind of point to the net position in various categories, whether it's capital assets restricted and unrestricted. So if you have a positive position in all those, it's obviously a good thing, and you do. So, no concerns there. And then we have on the next page there, we kind of look at the change in net position over year over year, and you have a positive change in both, um, the governmental activities, those are supported by taxes, and the business type is supported by fees, so no concerns there. As far as the next set of financials, it's broken down into particular funds you have, with the general fund obviously being the one that you have the most control over. You have two, over $2 million in fund balance reserve there. The tip funds does have a negative position, which is typical for tip districts. You kind of expend amounts upfront, and then you collect a levy for that in the future, so no concerns there. Positive balance in the other funds. And as far as the change goes, um, most of the funds pretty much broke even over the year. Another thing we typically look at is fund balance in the general fund compared to expenditures. And you have over a year's worth of expenditures built up there, so that gives you some, gives you some flexibility to do what you want there, and no major concerns. The, uh, page nine there, the business type proprietary funds with your electric, water, and sewer. Um, the electric fund does have a negative position there, and you're unrestricted, meaning that most of the amounts that you have there are invested in capital assets. So, that's, I guess, somewhat concerning to keep, keep an eye on and watch out for that, but if you do look on page 10, that fund did have a positive $92,000 increase this year, so that's a good one to, to see, and hopefully in future years you can keep collecting to get that balance up to be positive. Um, so that's pretty much the financials. There is notes in the financials that kind of go over some various aspects for your, for your reading. Obviously your long-term obligations are detailed there on page 27, for you to look at, and then you're refinancing a lot of these now, so I'm sure you're well aware of how much you owe over future years, and this will obviously change a lot next year. Probably all I usually point out on the financial statements, I guess I do look at the budget actual, that's another thing that's always of interest. Page 45 there, um, revenues were 12,000 over budget, and expenditures were, were 500,000 over budget, but most of that was capital outlay, which maybe you didn't properly budget for that, or you had some unexpected, I can't remember off the top of my head what happened there. Oh, now I remember. So, you're, you had debt to finance those capital outlays, and according to Gatsby rules, even though you borrowed for it, you technically have to report that as a source of revenue and an expenditure of that revenue, so maybe that wasn't incorporated in your budget, so. So, not anything concerning, just a, maybe in the future if you do borrow money and you take the proceeds, kind of budget that and then budget the expenses. Other than that, we do have a separate required communication letter to kind of give a summary of the audit and how it went, and kind of some internal control evaluations. So with that letter, um, once again describing what our responsibility is, um, what our level of assurance we give on required supplementary information. There was a change this year, and I guess I didn't point that out, with Gatsby 84, uh, was related to fiduciary activities. So with that, Gatsby's basically kind of redefining how you do your funds. And in the past, the library funds were kind of held off the village's books, but according to the new definition, they're technically under your control, so we did combine those with the general fund. I guess there was probably a footnote to discuss that. I guess I probably should have pointed that out. So it was bringing, I can't remember the amount of offhand, but... Yeah, bringing in about, yeah, $250,000 of library funds into the general fund. So it didn't really do too much related to revenue expenses, but now those amounts are shown as assets. We also did have a couple other minor corrections during the year, with, um, the tax agency fund had some amounts in there that really shouldn't have been there, so pulled those into the general fund. And then there was some miscommunication with capital outlay last year on the audit, when we reduced, those amounts weren't accrued properly, or they were accrued twice, or something like that, I can't remember exactly what happened. We did adjust for that. So just a little bit of cleanup this, this year to get everything right, but we hopefully will be good going forward with that. And then, as far as this report here, we didn't, didn't have any difficulties in the audit. There was some misstatements that we found, and copies are available for Shelley if you're curious. No disagreements with management. And as far as internal control matters, we didn't specifically test internal control, but we do have to gain an understanding to design our audit procedures. And with that, we did have, um, three significant deficiencies. The first one with account reconciliations. And as you can read here, there was a lot of different things going on, all hopefully won't, won't repeat in the future. Like I said, nothing major against Shelley or anything like that, just some miscommunication, obviously with Wagner not doing audits anymore, not communicating there, and then just some simple oversights that, um, she, she fixed once we pointed them out, and she was well aware of what she did. So, I feel like we have better communication this year, and you've already had communication last week on how to account for things. You'll account, have more communications on the debt, so I just encourage more, more of that, and just more to stay on top of things to make sure things don't fall behind. So, no major concerns, and hopefully we can get rid of this in the future as we get things cleaned up. And then the next one, financial accounting reporting. Almost every village this size is going to have this. And Shelley knows how to do everything here, but she may be not familiar with all the Gatsby pronouncements, stand on top of those, and I wouldn't expect her to. So, we do help her with that, writing the financial statements and accounting for the proper, um, reporting according to Gatsby. So, nothing really you can do about that. And then segregation duties as well, with a small village, you're going to have opportunities for somebody to steal small amounts of money, I would hope, or hopefully nothing at all, but there's opportunities there. So just, uh, we recommend you take a close look at everything. If you have any questions, maybe do a little bit more due diligence than if you were to a big city and rely on their controls. Like I said, nothing you can really do, other than hiring a bunch of people, and you don't have the money for that. Um, and then, I guess another thing we've kind of just been suggesting not requiring is cybersecurity, it's definitely a hot topic that, um, a lot of governments have, some of them have to pay a lot out in ransom attacks. So, I don't think you have any specific concerns here, but if it's something that you do...
We'll just give them the keys.
Yeah, they can have what they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, so there's just nothing to stay on top of, and if you want more information, definitely reach out to me, and I can coordinate some conversations with our team on that. Um, there's some new accounting pronouncements coming up in the future. I don't think it's going to have a major impact here, but we'll, we'll evaluate that in the future. So that's the report. And did you want me to go over the library thing, or is that pretty much?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you did ask us to do, um, some additional procedures on the library, just kind of gain an understanding with the controls that are over those amounts, and come up with any recommendations we have related to that. And I guess, yeah, the main thing that we kind of found out is, obviously, you know, the library has a separate board, and I feel like they have some good controls over there to, um, properly account for everything, but since the library is under your control and you're providing those systems, maybe, um, there could be some better communication between the two boards and also the two people, just to kind of help you do your job to evaluate that as well. So, I think there's going to be controls over everything, but it can't hurt to bring more people involved, so. I don't know, I think I recommended, I didn't put in here, was, um, just kind of related to that information, it seems like they wait until they approve the financial statements before they give it to you. Personally, I don't feel like that adds in any control. I mean, you guys have rights to that information just as soon as the library board does. Maybe they don't agree, maybe they do, I don't know. But that was just my suggestion, just have a conversation with them, and you get the information a little more timely, just so you can do your due diligence over those amounts. So that was what I was talking about there. Um, they do have a separate bank account over there. Like I said, there is good controls over that, but, um, if you look at other villages and cities, maybe they don't have that separate account, and it can't hurt just to add another level of control to have, and go through the same process that all the other checks go through here. Like I said, it does give up some control on their end, maybe they don't agree to that, and maybe there is some reason there, and I didn't dive into that further, but just as an independent person, I just like, can't hurt to have additional controls if, if it can be done. I know sometimes it's timelier to have them just do it themselves and not run it through here, but it does kind of add some flexi, or add some more control if you're doing that here. And then, yeah, I mean, like, like I said, I just encourage some cooperation and communication there, just to get on the same page. I don't think there's any major concerns, but anything you can do to make both of your lives easier and not have the, the political stuff that you don't really need to have to, to kind of think there's something going wrong. So, that was kind of what I found. I don't know if there's any questions on that, or I guess at this point.
We're working on the reconciliation part now, right?
Yeah.
Bailey's working on that.
Okay.
And Shelley.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, major slight improvements that should be made.
Absolutely.
Make sure everything's done.
Has anybody got any questions?
No, no, this is just an opportunity for Brian to share what he put together, and if you ask any questions, it's, um...
Have we had any questions, alright? I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we certainly...
Thank you for the time.
Alright. Five B, resolution authorizing issuance of sale of $2,860,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2021A.
I would ask if we can delay this until Ellers comes online. They do have another meeting they're in right now, and I expect they'll be joining us here around kind of 15, so.
Okay. We can, we can go back to that.
Okay.
Uh, let's go on to D, discussion action on community park field days 2021 items. Fireworks permit, street closure. We have it in front of us, right? So... Is this something the fire department approves? Um, we do, we do inspect it and approve it after the permits issued, before it's valid. We have all the insurance information.
And you absolutely need to.
He's well insured.
Very well.
Yeah, so... Right move, we accept the pyrotechnics display of fireworks license application for fire departments' final approval. Okay, second move, James, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we've got the street use application.
Yeah, so there's a couple areas of Park Street that are going to need to close down. Um, the first section will be here at Park Street between Mills and Centers for the parade on that day, and then the second portion will be down near Community Park, um, for the fireworks display. And, yeah, I don't know if you can explain anymore of that segment for this or not.
Yes, so first Park Street, just Park Street. Are you doing that just 11 to 1 during the parade?
Yeah, just during the parade.
Making people move their cars after that?
So, we also have a family reunion at Gus Park, and that closed area, um, I don't know...
Right, I know we were going to use that as designated parking for the family reunion, but how long are we leaving that closed?
I just had down from 11 until 1.
So they'll have to move their vehicles to reopen that street afterwards?
They can be parked on the street, just open the street back up.
As long as they're not parking in...
They just ground it so they had parking area available to park after that, that's it. Okay.
Well, what time are they done?
Family reunion.
They're already parked, so...
Right, but I didn't know, like, if we're making a designated area, or you're allowing them to actually park on?
No.
Like the road driving area, okay.
Still going to be accessible for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, perfect. Um, and then the other spot would be, so Park Street going out, basically from the parking lot at Community Park, we'd close that going to Village Limits. Also, Call Road will be closed in the township. I've talked to the patrolman, he said he had no issues with us making those closures. Still accessible for emergency, obviously, from the east end, so.
So we'd be able to close it all the way up to 14, then?
Yes.
It's easier to close it there than have them come turn around.
Yeah, and I talked to, uh, barricade flasher service in Mezzo, and they said they would be willing to donate extra signs. And we just are labor to put them up, obviously, but they didn't feel that a message board was appropriate on Highway 14, but he said he'd give me enough signs to make a good warning, so traffic trying to turn down wouldn't be able to. So, I think we'll be covered.
Motion to approve that? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the road closure application form, the street use application form.
Uh, hold a second.
Yeah, we've got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fantastic. Discussion, action regarding village board minutes 7/7/2021.
Right move approval.
Alright, I get it. Okay, hold on for discussion here. Yep. Okay. So what the votes are now.
No, I think I'll leave it alone. And I think I'll leave it alone.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Second action on treasures and financial reports, June 2021.
Okay, so your financials for this month. The treasures report is through the month of June. Um, all accounts are sitting at 2.4 million, and at this point, um, half of the ARPA funds are received, of 74,000 that did come in in June. In July, and we'll talk a little bit about this also with the revenue expense reports coming in, but we have 95,000 of other dollars that have come in in the month of July. That'll be reflected on next month's treasures report, but they will be sitting already in revenue, and also that's where it is. Um, your revenue and expense reports through, are through July, which at this point, we should be sitting at about 58% of the budget in our utility, um, accounts or funds, I'm sorry. The general fund revenues are sitting at 31%, with expenses at 47%. And this revenue expense report does reflect the carryover funds that were approved last month, those are now in to the adjusted budget column. And, um, that 95,000 that I mentioned, uh, during the treasures report, has hit these revenue accounts specifically. The LRIP funds were received back on Clearing Street. We received a check for $49,600. Our transportation aides were $17,730. Computer aides have come in of 1,900. Video service provider funds of 4,000 are in, and shared revenues of 22,000 have hit these July revenues at this point. Um, electric revenues are sitting at 56.8% with expenses at 53. We did see, uh, over the last two months, uh, an increase in our electric and even our water utility, just due to the temperatures, a lot of air conditioners running, a lot of watering of lawns during the drought, boosting these numbers up a little bit. Water revenues are sitting at a little over 60% with expenses at 56%. Sewer revenues are sitting at 60% with expenses at 41%. So expenses across the board are well below budget, comfortably below budget. Fogg is, we will see final tax settlements come in, so we will hit the revenue account in the general fund and the general property taxes. That will throw our revenues well over 80% at that point, up until November, where we'll start leveling out a little bit to where we should be to budget. November is where all the other final settlements come in on transportation aides and furniture resprings expense. Those are your financials.
No, I've, anybody got any questions? Alright, no we got any questions, I'll make a motion to approve financials. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, G, discussion action on use of personal funds for file server, front office computer replacement, Danny.
Yeah, um, I'm throwing this out probably a little clearer than I would have liked to have, but Danny's computer is about done. I think the computer has been using the 2013 model. It's running extremely slow and not being efficient to help our residents. Um, the other side is, of course, my computer is the server for the whole village here. Um, I've attempted to try and ask this board to get my computer as a separate server, but it's just been too cost prohibitive for the village to do that in the past. I'm asking if we could use some of our ARPA funds to get, um, we have enough in our regular expense account for Danny's computer, but to be able to use some of these ARPA funds to get an actual server for the village. And, uh, this also goes into the audit content on cybersecurity, and also improving our efficiencies for our residents. Phoenix has been working with us since they had to come in to help Danny's computer out, so that started the discussion. She's personally returned to help.
So the server upgrade with the external hard drive for backups, 3, 3 terabyte, laboring only 6,900?
Yeah.
That's your upgrade as well?
That was, no, Danny's, uh, system to get her, um...
635?
Yeah. Plus the Microsoft office.
And office. But you have enough for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The carryover funds we brought in from last year will help out that cost for... How much carryover is that from last year? We have $1,800 sitting in, um, the clerk IT body. The carryover from adequately was around 1,600 here.
1600 or 1500?
We have, we brought over 1,600, but the total sitting in that account is 1,800. That's a more than adequately covered damage.
So we don't, don't need to take any action, is that what you're saying? Not with Danny's. Alright. But if we want to upgrade the server and use the ARPA money?
That.
For the 6,900, we would have to prove that.
For the server, would that just be in this building in addition? It wouldn't be on a separate?
No, it would be in the building. Um, I'm not quite sure where we would set that up. I, I would trust Phoenix to help us figure out the back implications for that. I suspect it'll be up in the front office somehow.
Yeah. I just wonder, I know when I was dealing with some IT backup issues at one of my companies, they said, "Where's your backup?" And we said, "Oh, it's right over there." And they were like, "What do you mean it's in the same building?" Because if a tornado rips through, then everything, you don't have a backup, right?
Oh, right.
You've destroyed both backups. So I didn't know if there's a way that we could work with, if Mezzo, like, we could spot, if they need a server, we could spot their server, and we could spot our server with them, and work together, I don't know.
Yeah, right now I have a portable drive that I do backup to. And then Civic and our utilities are backed up to a cloud. Yeah, exactly. Um, our utilities, John, with everything is backed up to a cloud that Civic has. It's tied to the system, so they always have that portion. Everything else is on an portable hard drive. Good question.
Wouldn't hurt to have a backup service to, a backup.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's not that expensive for one server.
When I look at they're including three external hard drives for additional backup?
Yeah.
So you're saying beyond that?
Yeah. Yeah, they're external USB hard drives, but I mean, then offsite, cloud-based type, like...
Does that turn out to be?
Right?
Yeah.
Uh, they use strongly rock climbing, encourage offsite storage, at least one of those backup sites.
Like the sharing Mezzo back and forth, right?
Yeah.
Back them up, they can back us up if they're willing, but...
Yeah. I mean, the, the only risk there is, we've seen in the last five years, it's a flood event that takes out both villages.
Yeah.
So then maybe we look to Mount Hore or somewhere, but, um...
Well, I, you know, I, I'm...
That's a 1 in 500.
I really like ARPA to be used to benefit everybody, right? I mean, that's what it's there for, and this kind of does. So I think it does fall under the ARPA.
It'll help us to be efficient in serving our residents, for certain. And obviously address the cybersecurity concerns. We only have one div. Phoenix is who we've gone through for all our IT work, and since they were in helping with Danny's, I asked them for that, so. Are we going to get other divs? We can, if that's what the whole board wants to do. I just started here, so everyone had an idea.
I doubt you get better prices than what they're showing.
No, it's pretty, this is pretty standard.
I mean, this is seven grand for a full server setup, that's...
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Yeah, plus five-year warranty and everything. I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to going out and looking, but I, if I, if we're going to get a better deal, it's not going to be, you know, we're not looking at like half of this. We're probably looking at maybe $100 cheaper or something to that effect, yeah.
How long, how long have we worked with this current company, Phoenix?
They've been here since before I started.
The ARPA funds, were those, those are the funds that we were also looking at using to pay for some of the debris cleanup and stuff from?
Not debris cleaning.
Sorry, not, or stormwater and things like that. The drainage cleaning and things like that.
Yeah.
The only caution I would say is that for the location, if you put that server in the front office, it's gonna be hot. Servers run hot.
Yeah, the area where we have everything right now and you have the copier, it is normal there.
And they're gonna get even, it's gonna get even hotter.
Maybe out for mailboxes or?
Oh, maybe.
Oh, in that back room, yeah.
Right, it's still, it's still lockable, it's still secured.
It's a security at the front, yeah.
You lock a cabinet for the server, so.
Right.
We can move stuff to make it work.
Yeah.
A small server like that's not gonna need any new electrical outlets or anything like that.
Sure, it'll run all the time. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and spend the sixty-nine thirty, six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for a new server. With three external USB hard drives for backup and approve the labor of eighteen hundred for a total of six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
That's proposed. That's proposed.
That's proposed.
That's the second thing.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
So what is the, what about Danny? Do I want to talk about that one?
We'll do it after we start getting the budget.
Oh, okay.
Item carryover.
Just a quick question, I guess if I'm allowed to ask it. What is the other computer like at the, on the front desk?
Danny's was replaced, um, gosh, I think he was. Was that still like pre-named? Yeah, that was earlier this year. Mine will need it, but getting the stuff off of it, that, that is server will help and do fine.
Yeah.
Mine has some upgrades over the last couple of years, but eventually it will be replaced with.
Think we got ours a little?
Yeah, we do.
All right. All right, so if you could then go back, it'll be?
Hello, Brian?
Hello, everyone.
Glad you can join us. Are you ready to go through all of this with us?
I, I am, I virtually warped from low di to here. So thank you for taking me in a few minutes late. Their meeting started at six oh five unfortunately, but they did have me at the top of the agenda, so. But yeah, so we sold both twenty-twenty-one A, which is general obligation promissory notes, and twenty-twenty-one B, the taxable GO notes. This morning at eleven o'clock and then went through the sale results, kind of make some minor modifications. And now project these results to you. So with that said, since the last time I was in front of the entire board, you may note that twenty-twenty-one A did change from thirteen-year bonds to ten-year notes. The reason for that was bond council was unwilling to render a legal opinion that they would, that it would be tax exempt debt for the substation project. Just because of the expectation to spend the proceeds within the tax laws. And that's a six-month time period without the PSC construction approval. So as unfortunate as that is, we were able to shorten the amortization to ten years and changing it from bonds to notes. Kind of widens the opportunity in terms of worst case scenario, what you can spend it on. And bond council is a little more willing to render that legal opinion due to that change. So we talked about options ad nauseam, presented various options to Shelley and Mitch. We went over, you know, different outcomes that could be tried to get. The gentleman from Forrester did a great job trying to get the PSC to give a pre-approval. Unfortunately, they do not work like Rocket Mortgage. They would rather do their normal run of business. So that said, you know, this, this did move the amortization from thirteen years to ten years. I'll go over what that means for the electric revenues against debt service, of course, at the end here of this. But that said, do you want me to share my screen so I can kind of focus on things or just kind of point out?
Ryan, do you want to also explain that from going from bonds to notes, there was like a sixty-dollar saving, right? Is that in your?
Right, right, so also changing from bonds to notes. You're, by shortening the amortization, of course, you're saving on interest costs as well. So it's not as dire as it may sound advancing that principle. There is about a sixty thousand dollar interest savings. So with that said, it kind of counterbalances itself as well as you have now more attractive maturities. Truthfully, we didn't sell bonds today with a same amortization as the previously proposed bond. So there's no way of telling truthfully what those future maturities would look like. But that said, you know, the higher your maturities, the better interest rates you typically get as they're just more attractive to an underwriter who's gonna sell them on the secondary market. So with that said, you know, you did have good sale results today as well, so I can walk through those.
The screen should be shareable for you.
Okay, I will do so. Okay, so I'll, I'll walk through A real quick. And the first page of our sale day report just kind of walks through the general events of sale day. So you had five bids, Bankers Bank out of Madison was the winning bidder. Kind of good, they typically go with some co-underwriters on the local level as well. So we may see that eventually, that you'll probably see some banks' names that pop up on the loan paperwork. Shelley in later documentation, but that said, Bankers Bank is pretty heavy in deals such as yours with the power amount that we were at. So it's good to see bankers continue to bid on that, especially if they didn't bid, that would be kind of a concern. So one, they bid and they aggressively bid, two, so. This, the second chart comparison from lowest to high bidder section chart, but really shows the advantage of selling competitively. Meaning kind of when you bid out a public project, like a street project or whatever, you're seeing the difference, the low to high bid. Can understand that what the market was willing to pay today and kind of the advantage you get from selling via that method. So in this effort, you had about thirty-four and a half thousand dollars of savings from low to high. So that said, that was good news. We just kind of have some general characteristics of the deal, which I'll kind of explain as I go through this report and look at the numbers with you. So I think the biggest thing to see though is that the issue size was decreased by fifty thou, fifty-five thousand dollars. And the reason for that is you were offered a premium, so you pay slightly a higher interest rate. But they give you money upfront to downsize the debt for that. So overall, net savings for the village on that and certainly fifty-five thousand to the plus is good. The additional savings there were due to, you know, when I presented the pre-sale. I put in estimated cost of issuance outside of our fees, because we know our fees, we don't know all of the other parties' fees. With that said, you had some lower fees when it came to bond council. And part of that may be actually the switch from bonds to notes as well, the paperwork on their end is, is less. So I would probably attribute that to the switch as well. And another important date in front of you is closing date that you can expect to get funds wired on August twenty-fifth. So I would highly recommend at least one village representative be at the village office to take the phone call to verify that funds were wired that day. Beyond that, I'm just gonna kind of go through, page four goes through the bid tabulation. All that shows is everybody who bid on the bonds and the winning bid. So you can kind of go through that at your leisure. Important information, the one thing that I'll point out is the number five in terms of how many bids you got is really good to see. We're A-plus effort is three bids, so getting five bids, you know, shows that people are interested in this deal. People are interested in the village, people think you're in a, you know, financially sound position. So really good to see that you have a lot of underwriters, not just local as well with the Chicago and Minneapolis. But truth be told, this Northland Securities tends to bid on things west of Madison anyway. But I think the banarity is really the truthful serum when you're talking about how attractive, you know, the finances and the specific deals are, so. This page six is an important page, a lot of numbers, because I compare pre-sale to sale day for both A and B. So I'll kind of go through both A and B and these tables. But I'll just quickly say for B, you had same amount of bids, five bids. BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee won that. The, the difference low to high was about twelve thousand dollars, just because, I will say, the taxable deal was smaller. And also the taxable rates just kind of come with a little less volatility. So, but with that said, you kind of had the same thing happen here with a significant premium offered. So you're able to downsize the debt by thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's thirty-five less principal that you're paying and then also accrued interest over time. The closing date again on this is August twenty-fifth. So with that said, the, you know, the bidders and everything are on the, you know, same fourth page on, on that report as well. So I'll go through both transactions simultaneously, because they are on both sale day reports. So you can kind of see what the changes are from pre-sale to sale day. I'll just kind of zoom in a little bit, but the biggest difference, go back up. Biggest difference here was premium offered and then the significant decreases in what was charged. I would, like I said, I attribute mostly that it's, it's from bond council, but probably because of the switch from notes to bonds. In addition to that, that premium offered reduced the bond size as well. When it comes to B, kind of the same story. We had lower cost of issuance, but even more significant was the premium change. So that allowed for a thirty-five thousand dollar downsizing. The biggest news, what that brought you, I'll kind of come back to these, is both of these were refundings. So on page eleven of both reports, you'll see table six, which is that refunding analysis, kind of looking at the three refundings we're doing in twenty-twenty-one. B was attached to this twenty-seventeen bank note, because it wasn't a tax exempt purpose. But the twenty-nineteen, or the, I'll just call it the community park loan and the streets and truck loan were attributed to A. So just kind of looking at your savings for all three. Even though we're doing the twenty-seventeen bank note for structure, you were still afforded about forty thousand dollars of savings, so that's really good news. Typically, you don't see that when you're trying to just restructure something. But that said, you also saw some increases in savings as compared to pre-sale with the community park loan and the streets loan as well. So with that said, your total savings for all three previous issues to now, what are two issues, is a hundred and five thousand dollars. So needless to say, the taxpayers will be happy to hear that, they'll be paying a hundred and five thousand dollars less. That'll come out of the tax levy. Our pre-sale estimate had it about fifty-five thousand, so we almost doubled it. Mainly that's attributable to the premium offered and truthfully, when we, you know, when I presented the pre-sale estimates, I was walking through that we do add a conservative buffer just in case the market moves. But that said, the market did not move. There really hasn't been any change in the bond market since our pre-sale report. So with that said, more or less you're removing that conservative buffer, kind of going status quo. So that said, you're afforded with the premium about an additional fifty thousand dollars in savings. So that is really good news. Beyond that, I'll just kind of go through the differences on the. Yeah?
Are you gonna give another breakdown then of how much people can expect taxes to go up with that levy to mount with the, with the savings?
Yeah, sure.
For two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house that's expected to go up six hundred and fifty dollars for the year, can you, do you have another one like that where you can?
Yep.
Since you have the number.
Yeah, so that's here on table four in both reports. It's page nine on both reports. So we're looking at the tax impact. So barring that, electric revenues and sewer revenues pay their share as they're supposed to. Your total debt service levy from twenty-twenty-one, so that's already happened, that's what you claimed on your levy limit worksheet this year. Will go down next year to two hundred sixty-five thousand, three oh one. So that's a fifty-three thousand dollar change. That means your tax rate will go down to about two point oh three, and this is only for debt service, this is not for your operating levy. And then on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home, that's from six twenty-three this year, just for debt service, to five oh seven sixty-two. The additional, you know, changes from the pre-refunding amount is about fifty dollars, but still going down as we were kind of planning on pre-refunding. So the overall savings, you know, comes on the back end when we're realizing those savings. So that said, good news overall that your difference in annual taxes, completing everything is a difference of eighty-eight dollars. So, you know, our, our main goal is obviously keep it status quo, keep this negative trend in debt service levy here. And then as well as can we realize savings from these refundings, which we are? Also gives you flexibility in a couple of years, next year, twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-eight. If, if the village were to need to issue debt for other projects or other equipment, that you could certainly do so. And still not increase the debt levy. So just kind of understanding that we've kind of built in that flexibility too in the structure that we've chosen. Does that make sense or answer your question?
Yeah, I can't read the tables, they're so small.
Sorry, I'll.
You're, you're, no, your tables are good. I can't, the printed ones, the printed ones are really confounding, that's why I asked, because I couldn't tell what it said even.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, we normally, if, if we're attending in person, I, I would have printed that on legal paper for everyone. So I apologize, one, that I had to attend the other meeting and then obviously attend this meeting via the web. But no, some significant, significant reduction in, in taxes, which is good. Just kind of looking at the two, the final thing that I'll say is, you know, the difference in the pre-sale, we went down about twenty-nine thousand dollars for B. In terms of what was shown at, at pre-sale. You know, you had some slightly higher rates for that premium, that's netted out by the premium that they, the money that they pay you upfront for that premium. So you're essentially paying six thousand dollars in interest, additional interest. But they're giving you an additional, you know, twenty thousand dollars that it ended up being in premium. So that nets it out. And then the other difference was what I walked through in the class of issuance. And then on the A, since you have a little bit higher maturities, that difference is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from pre-sale. So, you know, the lack of market movement helped, the premiums that were offered on both helped. You're also getting a little bit of premium to debt service to kind of help out that electric utility in the first year. Just because we had so much premium that we have a little bit to use for that debt service in the first year. So overall, what this means is the final point that I kind of wanted to get to is the coverage on the electric utility. So I'll zoom in again, just so we can get this real. Fill up. Okay, so this is what's called all-in coverage. If you remember from the pre-sale report presentation, that's kind of the, can we keep the lights on and pay for our debt service? Meaning when I say keep the lights on, can we pay for our cash operating expenses? And net of those cash operating expenses, do we have revenues or net revenues available to pay for our debt service? So our twenty-twenty net revenues were three sixteen, two ninety-eight. And so based on the results of the sale today, you'll be at about one point two six of that with the remaining capacity of sixty-five, almost sixty-six thousand dollars and higher as we go. So we've structured this to kind of try to make sure that those debt service payments go down over time for a couple of reasons. One, to give you that flexibility of we don't know what the volatile expenses of the electric utility will be. You don't know what future projects may. You don't know what future projects may present themselves. And then lastly, we know that we do have some rate adjustment coming on. So that should add to this capacity as well. So does that kind of make sense in terms of where we've landed with the electric debt coverage?
So Brian, what you're saying is we're 60, let's call it 66,000,000 away from the top.
No, away from not where your net revenues would not be enough to pay for debt service, meaning that you would be pulling out of reserves to pay for debt. So you have kind of that $66,000 buffer. But this is at 2020 net revenues, you know, with that rate adjustment coming in after the PSC rate case is closed.
So how far from the top of our lending, our levying capabilities are we? Our levying capabilities, how far from the top? The state, is it state mandated, a maximum?
Oh, for Geo, yeah, the Geo debt capacity?
Yeah.
Okay, so for the Geo debt capacity, your debt limit. And I did not plug in the new number, I don't believe. I did not plug in that that new number. So you did have a significant increase in your equalized value of about 17%. So that would be over and above what we're showing here. But that said, your debt limit was 6.6 million. With this new debt and existing principal that was not refunded. You're at about 77% of your debt limit and a residual capacity of 1.5 million dollars. But you certainly gained that back pretty quickly here with this amortization schedule at about 2.2 million of residual capacity in 2022. So I would, I would say still in a healthy position, barring if you had a future project that we had not been aware of through the rest of this year, 2021. So without that, absent any other large project that we're not aware of, I would say you're still in a healthy position to execute future financings, 2022 and beyond as necessary.
Looks good, Brian. Thank you.
Yep, I'll I'll stay on for the, for the vote. And then I'll just say one thing after you guys are done voting as well, just kind of some reminders, administrative things to do, so.
I have so much to do for work on this.
It's a lot.
So let's, we might as well go ahead on the resolution authorizing the issuance of sales of 2,860,000 general allegation promissory note series 2021A. I move, do we approve it? Got a first and a second, all in favor? Never mind, sorry, roll call.
All right. All righty.
The resolution states, I don't know what number you said, but it says two or 2.85 million.
That's correct. That's.
I don't think you said that. Yeah, so do you want to make a resolution?
Yeah, I was going off the.
All right.
2.805, okay, yeah. I'll amend my motion for 2,805,000.
All right, Scott Hatchett.
Yes.
Jared Ramerson.
Yes.
Mitch Hodgson.
Yes.
Tyler Monson.
Yes.
Terry Moir.
Yes.
Jane Coyle.
Yes.
Mary Scott. Mary, yes.
So that passes. We wanted to see res- resolution authorizing issuance of sale of 885,000, or no, let's change that. 850,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes series 2021B. I make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call vote, Hatchett.
Yes.
Jared Ramerson.
Yes.
Mitch Hodgson.
Yes.
Tyler Monson.
Yes.
Terry Moir.
Yes.
Jane Coyle.
No.
Mary Scott.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
And that again was on the 885 and it was 805.
Yeah.
Or 850, yeah.
And then Shelley, if you don't mind getting those bid forms signed, because those need to go back to the underwriters. So I sent those in that email today. And then in the packet that Coral sent you via email, kind of gives you the instructions of how to disseminate the information back to them. So if you have any questions on that, just give me a holler tomorrow morning.
All right.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for having me and I I do apologize, I was a little late. Good thing I was able to warp fast enough.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Yep, thank you, bye-bye.
What kind of world are we in where the internet, there's traffic problems? Traffic jams on the internet even.
All right, that's done, we'll go back down to G. Discussion action on invoice invoices to be. Actually follow up. So that was, after checking into that. That was brought up at the 413 Village Board Meeting. And Bill had mentioned that, I I knew it rang a bell, but it didn't quite ring a bell exactly how it went. And I was really the one that questioned it originally. Let's see, an associate had determined that it was necessary for multi-villages to bring their code up to code. And he brought that up. And then it was raised at the 413 Village Board Meeting and he was directed to proceed. I don't remember how or what, but. I do remember talking about it, though, I just don't remember exactly what. So I mean, we're we're doing itemized billings forward now anyways, right?
Yeah, the recent bill came in itemized.
Yeah.
But that's in regard.
This was the one we helped because we didn't know why it was done.
But Shelley is going to supply us with the detailed bills from that month, those two, right? I don't have the details yet from him. I've asked him that to go back and be itemized by going forward like six months is definitely itemized towards and so I don't have that one. But you'll get that one, I hope.
Yeah. But I I based upon, I believe that it was brought up and I believe that we did talk about it. I don't think he just did it out of the blue.
I don't remember.
But it wouldn't have been on the agenda anyways to make a motion on it, so if it was just brought up.
Yeah.
So we couldn't have approved to have him do it.
Probably not.
No.
But we could have kind of directed him to do it based upon our conversations, so.
Isn't it on the recording then?
It doesn't matter, it wasn't on the agenda to approve anything. Yeah. Go out and say, hey, do this.
Yeah.
It's like saying.
But I do remember us talking about it at a meeting, so.
Yeah, but there's no action. I don't remember any action on it.
Yeah, I don't either, that's why I brought it up originally.
Was there a reason why we would need him to look at it specifically versus the audit we're already doing for it?
Well, originally, one of the associates had determined for multi-villages that we're out of code. And and he had brought it up when, and I believe somebody who brought it up, it was brought up also with alcohol reading containers from bars and stuff at that meeting.
Okay.
And then there was all kinds of discussion, so I I I. I remember talking about it, but I don't remember approving it. But you know, the question is, based upon what we talked about, did he kind of expect to fix, I don't know. So.
But he's the attorney and he knows what the law is and if he's not directed to do it by board vote, like showing.
I understand, but I, you know, it.
My problem was is that it just came out of the blue and there was, we didn't spend money. We didn't ask to spend money.
Well, he's he's saying he kind of did, you know, we we kind of directed him to look into it. And you know, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't have our. I would be so, I'm lying if I wouldn't remember some of the conversation.
But we brought up last time that we were in no rush to get this done. And so if he was going to.
This was done before that.
If he looked into it.
Yeah.
And then presented it with a, if we would have had time to vote on it, we could sit on it for months and vote on it and it would still be fine. Because the law prevailed.
So is is this in the 9150 then?
No, no, the bill, the invoice that you're seeing is for, well, there's a finalization, I'm sorry, yeah, 9150 is in there.
And then there's the two other things.
Yeah.
But that's not from last month, the production of it, this is an additional 9150 that was. So that we paid even more, what did we pay even more on now? The conversation about it when you called on or?
I don't have all the invoices, we can go get it if you'd like.
I do want to know what we're.
Well, we're not going to do it now.
Are you saying what, what do you want to know what the total is?
There's an additional 9150 that came on this month in addition to the, what we don't know is last month's charge for creating the ordinance that we could have just sat on. Whether or not we were interested in him looking into it is one thing.
Yeah.
But if we're already having to recount.
I don't want to talk, I I think either we're going to vote to pay it or we're not. So I'm going to make a motion, we go ahead and pay it and really follow them up, the itemized invoices going forward. Because I do believe that we kind of indirectly directed him to do it, based on what I remember, so.
And how much was that?
Well, it was multi-things, it was 800s, but there was other things in it.
723 and that.
The 723 is including other things from initially, right?
Last month's bill was total of 2,089, but that was a combination of a court case, the alcohol thing and also the Black Earth Elementary School district, the property case. How much is that, 1868, because that was, took the court, separated the court charge out last month. I don't know how much of the 1868 is regarding this order. So what's the 91 for this month then?
We have to go get the invoice and hold it. It looks like it's going to be for about 0.3 tenths of an hour.
I'm just saying that our village attorney should know.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, is there a second or not?
Vote on it and he did not stop.
Okay, there's there's a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's deadlock.
Well, okay, I didn't hear all the ayes, I heard two nays.
Roll call.
Yeah, go roll call.
Hatchett?
No.
Ramerson?
Yes.
Hodgson?
Yes.
Monson?
Yes.
Terry Moir?
Yes.
Coyle?
No.
And Mary?
No.
Okay, passed. All right. All right, so the next discussion action is invoice to be paid is the mid-stage invoice follow-up.
I made a phone call, there was a billing issue with the tires for the Bobcat. We have not received the new invoice yet, but corrections will be made on that to be lower than what the initial 750 was.
Is this an additional issue from the first one of having like different rims or something like that?
Nope, this is the same issue. Yep.
So we shift flow to the next month again?
Yeah, because we don't have the new invoice.
Yeah.
We need yet, so unless it just came in last day or something.
I'm going to void out the check that was issued and then we'll just wait for the new invoice that should be on the next month.
Okay.
Good.
All right, reports.
How about the rest of the bills that need to be paid?
No. Where's that at?
No.
Oh, that's just all. We'll skip right over them, we'll save some money this month.
I move for schoolhold the invoices to be paid.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah. I'm curious about Beacon Athletics, why, why are we paying for base set on small golf field? Isn't that something that could just be done and calcinate play?
The softball team had requested having an additional softball pad, so that's what the $139 is for. So it's an extra base, that's what it is.
On the small ball field?
Yes. There's an orange base, so kind of a safety thing is what it is. So when players are running, being that they're little kids, they have the kids gear off to that safe pad, that orange pad, so there isn't any collisions.
What about the calcinated clay?
That's to dry the field.
Okay.
Let's feel dry basically.
And then this, we don't need to vote to have extra things purchased, they just comes out of the park from there?
Yeah, that's what we got a part maintenance for.
Okay.
And that was approved of two parks committee, very good, so I mean, it was very hard there, so.
And then what was the Digger's hotline for?
The Digger's hotline is for our Digger's tickets.
Yeah, that's just the normal fees though.
From the last couple because of the state, you get like a, you pay a chunk and then it comes easy way.
Yeah, twice a year we pay a significant amount and then they just deduct each of the tickets from that. That's what this is, is the second half of this year's expected column.
And then I have a question on Kenchi Pedal Pool. So the Community Park Field Day is down payment of $100, is that going to be refunded out of the $10,000?
You know, my question, let me just go back to something really quick. Do you have some financial information on the park? So the expenses for the Park Field Days. We've expected expenses, fireworks, parade, this is about 15,000 in expenses. With donations received as of today, we are looking to still raise about 5,000 so that nothing would have to come out of our taxpayer dollars. We've gotten over 9,000 donations and we have four other major people who have expressed their interest. I just don't have dollar amounts on that, so we've gotten a lot of great donations.
So 15 was spent, nine?
We're expecting 15,000 in expenses.
We're actually on just invoices we paid, so.
Right, but she just asked the question.
On that.
Are we going to be reimbursed $100 from Kenchi Pedal?
Yeah.
Because we've already received the donations, so we're not going to approve this $100.
Still got to get paid.
So it's going to come back to us, we're going to see a credit.
We received the money from Field Days. We received the money from Field Days, so the money's already in our pocket.
Yeah.
We're just paying for it. All the financials go through the village, so all that's received comes through us.
Donations are coming in.
So we're going to see fireworks and every, all, everything.
All of them does.
Everything coming through here.
Okay, I didn't realize that, I thought that they were. Hopefully, you know, like next month, what I would like to do if we can, is I'll show you the revenue with all the donations that were received and then all the expenses, because we see it for comp, I should be able to just print you all of them and you can see the tracking.
Right, and then the tracking, who donated it or what?
All right, and let's go back on the invoices, so that's not, it has not been, the invoices be paid yet. So is there any more questions on invoices to be paid?
And then park seed, we're not going to lay that until after the Field Days, right?
Park seed, that's.
I heard it's done.
Yeah, that's already been done.
The trees in the best park.
Oh, I see, I was thinking park days out at the community park, yeah.
Well, park seed is around the Bugsley Shelter, there was a lot of red granite out there overgrown with dead grass.
Oh, it's not the trees, it's the red granite?
Yep, we just tore the red granite out and put grass on.
Looks nice.
Here, I'll ask you, I think it's a no, nice and clean, no.
So that's all grown, cool.
Yep. All right, any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we can go to community reports. Vanguard, Sean was not able to be here tonight. They've just got the work in progress going on. They're working on an expansion somewhere.
They're doing a big residential at Cedar Hill Lane.
Yeah, Cedar Hill Lane, that's right.
Kind of tying a lot of time up, you're still doing some work in Maiso.
Yeah.
The highway.
Yeah. We did have a Vanguard meeting last Tuesday, the two weeks ago Tuesday. Same update. The date was, um, same update. Um, we talked about, our electrical superintendent is going, his wife took a job in North Dakota as a admini- CEO administrator for a hospital.
Kansas.
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 They're rectangles.
Uh, rectangles. Um, he is going to still work. He's going to work remotely, some, and he's going to be here every other week. Um, he did take a reduction in pay and we're going to see how it goes and reevaluate it a couple months from there. So we're going to try it out. Um, it sounds like it's possibly going to work. If not, we'll be looking, hopefully it works, so.
And what's his title again? He's the superintendent?
Superintendent of Electrical, yeah, of Vanguard.
And who monitors him to make sure that it's working?
The board, they have their own board.
So they're going to get all that detail?
Yes, we do. Um, otherwise there's nothing else major. Um, you remember anything else, Scott? Oh, you weren't there, Scott.
We were.
Okay. Okay, next meeting will be, not sure when it is, I haven't got my email yet. We'll get an invite here. It's every other month, so hopefully next month will be the one that. Blackhurst Fire District.
They did not meet, September fifteenth will be the one.
Okay. Dean, Iowa.
We met on July fifteenth. That's the last one, yeah, very short meeting, just approved bills, um, the, we did get another, um, adaptive manag- management project to get rid of phosphate, that's, or phosphorus is going to start. Um, there's been no agreement yet, but it's, he's, the guy's going to do it. Um, just group bills and financial statements, that's it.
Emergency Management did not meet?
For that community, um, okay.
Oh, sorry, eight, uh, eight nineteen.
Thank you. Update for you, emergency management stuff. There is a series of Zoom meetings that, um, we should see a link coming out this Friday from Emergency Management. And this is regarding our hazard mitigation update. Uh, they do have options for attendance on this, on several dates with attempts next week, Tuesday being one of those meeting requirements, and then also on the seventeenth. And there'll also be one on the twenty-sixth, but that information has not been released for the twenty-sixth yet. So those that are on the Emergency Management Committee, please watch for that. If you attended the initial hazard mit, you should have received these emails and notices. If not, please let me know, I'll get that out. And then, um, feel free to attend one of the options for these meetings that are coming up.
And it's one of the three, the three days are identical?
So each week it's going to be a different topic.
Okay.
So, um-
There was multiple opportunities throughout the year.
Yes, that is correct.
Variable times.
Be, on August seventh, there'll be a nine AM, a two PM, and a six thirty option. On August seventeenth, there'll be a nine AM and a six thirty option, an option also on Wednesday, the eighteenth at two.
Is this open to anyone on the board or is it, um?
It's, um, it's specific to our Emergency Management Committee. Sure that you wanted to sit in on it, you sure could. Just let me know and I'll make sure to get the links out to everyone. If you don't get it, please let me know.
I haven't gotten it yet, but you said not yet.
Yeah.
Friday, they'll release, um, the link to the meeting.
I'd like to be, if our schedule allows me to go, but yeah.
Okay.
All right, EMS committee?
Um, okay, so I got a little bit to go over, so bear with me, there's a big reveal at the end. It'll be really exciting. Um, uh, we met July eighth at six thirty. Uh, we did have a public comment that was from one of the actual volunteers that is outside of our district. Um, it was basically a cry for help. Uh, the EMS crew is down in staff members, um, pretty significantly. Um, at this point in time, year to date, we've lost fifteen volunteers. Um, so there's a big push right now to, for recruitment and changing things up to try and get more people involved. Uh, there was, they specifically called out a lot of the staff is older than sixty and getting ready to retire. So, um, we're, they're expecting at least five more people to retire by the end of the year. What that all means is that, um, we run the risk of not having coverage, basically, um, because we don't have enough volunteers to staff it. So, um, in the future, there is a very real possibility that when you call for services, there won't be anybody in the district that will be able to respond because there won't be volunteers for it. Um, you'll still have services, Montoro, existing communities will still be able to help, but you're not going to get that response time. Speaking of response time, um, the building, uh, the EMS building is thirteen years old. Um, they had some numbers, um, I got them somewhere, um, that were showing that the response times due to the building being in the community is exponential. Um, they're able to get to calls, uh, a lot quicker than if you're coming from Cross Plains and Montoro. Um, so community service wise, that, um, building itself is paid off. Um, so what all that leads to is, um, Jim's probably already talked to you about recruitment options.
Yeah, yeah, stuff on the board.
So, um, talked about sending out recruitment flyers and utility bills, things of that nature to try and get more local involvement. Um, because right now, uh, we are pulling from other communities, so at the meeting, um, the two people that were on call are from Fond du Lac and Wanakee. Um, so they weren't even local members, yeah, and we don't know how long we can rely on that, on that service. So what got brought up is increasing the levy. So that's the big reveal. Um, they will, the finance committee of the EMS committee will be meeting this Friday at seven AM. I won't be able to attend because I've got to go to work. Um, but they're going to talk about increasing the levy, um, for all communities involved. Uh, so that was approved at the board. Um, some questions I had around that is, you know, what does that mean? What happens if we don't do it? Um, the big thing about not doing it is we're not going to have that service. Um, you know, there could be that lack of service. Um, they are doing a pretty good job at trying to budget that. And one of the things that they're doing, which I thought was pretty admirable, is Jim Wick is going to step down from his, his position, um, and he's going to take on a less paying position as a training director, um, to allow them to hire on a full-time, um, person to staff the, staff the, the house. Um, so he will be still maintaining all his roles and responsibilities and his volunteer duties that he currently does, just that a pay decrease. Um, so I thought that was, like I said, pretty admirable to be willing to make that sacrifice for the community. So there's, uh, they did throw out some numbers as far as what they're kind of anticipating what the levy increase will be, but they didn't really want to share those, um, until they actually have that discussion and get those numbers financed, or get those solidified. So expect that to be coming out, um, hopefully soon. Like I said, they meet this Friday morning, um, so hopefully by next meeting, at the very least, we'll have that information. Um, and then our next, our next meeting is September ninth at six thirty PM.
So you don't need an alternate to attend this one coming up in the morning?
No, because there's a committee within the committee. Um, so I could attend as a, just an observer, but I want to be there as like a committee member, yeah. Uh, so yeah, so there'll be meeting, all that. Um, I mean, if you are interested in attending, I can get that information, get that out to you. But it'd be more of a observational than participation. Um, I think that's all I have, for that.
I'd like to add to that. So the, the fifteen members that they lost, I mean, it wasn't because of controversy or anything.
Right.
It, they, they have a lot of medical students in Madison and nursing students that come out and pull shifts. Um, and we, a bunch of them graduated. They left. They had for a couple, few years, now they're gone. Um, and that happens every now and then. Um, and, you know, the classes are longer every year. So, um, it wasn't very long ago, Cross Plains was out of service a lot, now they're full-time. They're paid. They run only two. Arena has a lot of paid people. So it's, it's going to happen, so.
Basically, yeah, it has to happen, if, if we want to keep the service.
You have to have the service.
Yes.
Who knows what happens. So it's been very, very, very cheap every year for many years. I mean, what's EMS cost us a year?
Just wondering if you're a volunteer for EMS, like do you have to be able to do IVs and stuff like that?
No, not at, we're, we're, we're not in a service.
Okay.
Um, you can't do IVs, but there's certain shots and stuff you do with D-Fib, twelve lead KGs, Epi, Lucagon.
EMS is thirteen thousand nine forty-two.
So animals cost the Village of Blackhurst thirteen thousand dollars a year. I mean, that's pretty huge. So it's going to go up.
Yeah.
Um, but if you want to volunteer, it's all kind of open, so.
Yeah, I thought about it.
I told Sunday night, he actually comes to stay, he stays around. All right, library board, Terry.
Hello. We last met on July twenty-first. We discussed and reviewed a six-month evaluation for the director role. Um, it looked real good. Uh, we approved a collection development policy. They began, we began discussions on the twenty-twenty-two budget, so she's in preliminary now. Um, Bailey talked about a park passport program, which sounded really fun. We partner with the Gateway to the Driftless. Um, Peter and Tony attended the meeting, and it's going to let folks earn prizes for visiting area parks. You're issued a passport, and then as you visit the park, um, you fill your passport and then turn in your completed passport, and prizes will include a free drink from QuickTrip, a free kids' meals from Culvers, a free book, an entry into a raffle for gift certificates to area businesses, and the program's open to all ages. And I believe it's running from eight, it started on eight-one, and it'll run through September fifteenth. So pick up your passports at the library. It's a, it sounds like a great program. Um, finally, uh, they're gathering materials for the library booth, the book sale at Field Days. Uh, mobile circulation kit will allow us to create library cards and checkout materials from a small selection of books during the actual event, as well as she's going to have crafts, a book walk, lots of freebies, and including free books. And, um, I, I believe Bailey's been weeding out and getting ready for this, um, the library sale at Field Days. And our next meeting is going to be August seventeenth at seven PM. That is my library board report.
Terry, didn't you guys mention something about changing the date that the board meets?
Yes, they did discuss that. Bailey has, um, she's talking with Gary, um, about a proposal that Shelley brought forward. They're just checking, evidently there's library statutes on how they report their financials. So she's checking that now, and we'll have more updates available at the August seventeenth meeting. To come, to, to actually bring this in line with what was discussed at the audit report tonight.
All right, Public Works Committee, Scott.
Uh, we met Monday, July twelfth at one o'clock. Um, there was no public input. Um, minutes were approved. Um, Sean discussed the project that he, we discussed earlier about Cedar Hill. Um, we're moving forward on the electrical substation, no new updates yet. I believe Shelley started, just discussed starting a list of projects for ARPATHONS. So we're keeping our eye on stormwater projects, uh, delineation in wetland areas like behind the shoebox. Timing and bidding process by law requirements is necessary. Uh, we discussed, um, gas cards and, uh, being able to spread, or get QuickTrip cards as well as, um, BP cards. Um, one thing that I didn't see on this month's, um, agenda, and we did, uh, we motioned to take it to the village board for a referenda decision, so I'd like to get that added the next month. The, uh, four-eye treatment. So if we can get that on next month's agenda, that would be great. Uh, committee has decided that it should be a, uh, taxpayer decision. I'll let you take it from here.
I think you summed everything up from the meeting. Um, things we've been working on, uh, the guys each had a week off. Tony was off last week, Scott was off the week before. Done some work at Community Park, cleaning up along the creek. Some trees that needed to be trimmed, a lot of the tall grass, weed whacked. The bus slash fire truck, I guess whatever you want to call it, was removed from the play structures down there. Uh, Parks Committee deemed that unsafe, didn't want it gone. Landscape stone was removed, new dirt, and seating was done down there also. Um, water sampling for the month was all good, safe. Worked with Nick a little bit. He came out and did a site visit for the landing area for the sidewalk at the shoebox. So next Public Works meeting, we'll have some information on that. Um, few meter re-reads done just due to the fact of high water, high electrical checks, making sure everything was in the right, that they were high, actually. We did not receive much storm damage last Wednesday night. A couple branches here and there. Um, we will be going to Cross Plains tomorrow and potentially a couple days next week. There was a reach out from Cross Plains's administrator to surrounding communities. Um, I believe Wanakee's coming this week to Cross Plains. And some other areas are helping out just with a small tornado they had that went through Wednesday night. So hoping to help them out in case we ever need the favor down the road.
So tornado, did it touch down?
Oh, yeah, it was a gust, it was a rough night.
Danny?
Yeah, zero.
Yeah, Danny was out running around.
With regards to that, we didn't hear, at our house, we all slept right through it, and I heard a bunch of people around us just slept right through the, nobody heard the alarm, yeah.
Yeah, it was only like two minutes long.
It did go off.
Yeah, and I've got, I've got two kids who are hypersensitive and anxiety with-
It did go off, but only for like two minutes.
They, yeah.
At one o'clock, right?
Yes.
I think they woke up at-
So I think I did see a message on Facebook or something that is designed for people outside. So typically, if you're in the house, the fan's not AC on, windows closed, you're not going to hear it unfortunately.
Yeah, and I was louder than the old one was.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I heard it go off today.
Yep. So.
But it, it was pretty windy too, so you know, the wind was blowing it away too.
Yeah.
Oh, I was shocked that we slept through it when it just pulled up and heard.
I never heard a thing.
So going to Cross Plains, is that, uh?
We're taking a truck and a couple guys with a chipper.
Is that like, um, a good faith or kind of situation or?
They're mutually set up anyways.
Yeah, they'll get, available to them and they'll get aid back to us.
We'll invoice them out for-
Okay.
So we'll invoice it to them and it'll be a good faith credit?
No, they'll pay the village because they're going to give grant dollars, that helps.
Yeah, they'll receive.
The grant will reimburse their, these requests.
Yeah.
Nice thing in doing it though, because they're more likely to help us if we do.
I was just saying, I wouldn't expect, yeah.
They go off too, then.
Yeah.
So with that, um, Jerry said their street sweeper's obviously going to be very busy. They're down a couple people that went to different locations, unfortunately took different jobs. But they will hopefully be able to get the street sweeper here before the parade next weekend. They're going to try. Um, other than that, uh, the yield signs are down by the shoebox, and we're kind of just doing some weed control maintenance on the streets and parks areas. So that's kind of all I have.
All right, our next meeting is August sixteenth at, uh, one PM.
I have two questions. What was that big orange, the orange machine going down Mill Street? It, it must have been Dane County, but they were spraying something.
Painting lines.
Paint convoy.
Painting lines.
Doing all the highways.
Oh, it looked like they were doing, it looked like they were spraying something into the gutter. They were doing lines, okay.
Could have just, they come through, they use a room to clean it off, and what you could have seen was maybe glass. They put recycled glass, crushed glass. That's what gives it the reflectivity on the paint.
Okay.
They put on cones this time too, I've never seen that.
Yep.
Did you know what, cones?
Yeah, cones don't work.
Uh, we were at, um, the park and looking at, it looked like they were doing curb work. That takes a curb question, that's mine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Parks Committee.
Um, okay, so we met on, I'll make it tomorrow. The nineteenth, was it?
July second.
July second, okay.
Or, I mean, twelve, sorry.
Twelve, yeah.
Yeah, it was the one.
Yeah, so we met, uh, July twelfth. Uh, we spent a little bit of time talking about the Field Days. Um, we've kind of passed over the coordination of, to that to Tom, Beth, and Pam. Um, so the Parks Committee is- So the Parks Committee has kind of stepped out of managing that, which is a plus in, in my book. So there's that. We did talk about the fireworks and the road closures, which we approved those permits this evening. We did approve the purchase of a hundred yards of mulch, which was already budgeted for. So that was a simple go-to. And then we talked about potentially bringing in an ice rink for the winter. So we'll, that will be on a future agenda to talk about that, along with potential of using rubber mulch instead of regular mulch. And then Cooper property, we're still kind of waiting on that to find out that transaction and then we can kind of move on what we want to do with that. And then we talked briefly about the, the school. There's a land survey being prepared. I don't know if anything's changed on.
No, the surveyor, they're really wrapped up and we don't expect to see the land survey to be done until maybe the end of September, while we can find out if they're there.
Other than that, we had a meeting scheduled and then we rescheduled it to the sixteenth. If that's right? August, yeah, sixteenth at six thirty. And we're going to have, have that here. We're not going to do that at the park this time, are we?
Whatever you want.
I think, yeah, just do it here.
Ask a question.
Go ahead.
Sure. Where was the suggested site for the ice rink? Did they get that far?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't know. We kind of threw some stuff out in the community park area. But we haven't really gone into any great detail on that yet.
Matt, isn't that where it usually is? It's over in that community park. It's been there in the past, hasn't it?
Years ago.
Yeah, that was fifteen years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and that is probably the same place that we were, we were talking about doing it right there, but.
So.
We wanted to wait till like budget and stuff.
Right. Right. So the one that used to be down at community park still is there actually. We pulled the water out of the creek, flooded it. The problem is there's no, there's just a clay liner, but you do get the air bubbles that do seep up over time, you know, with the thawing and refreezing. And we just don't have any equipment really that was able to clean it off besides a pickup truck to go scrape it off and that. So now if we do it, I think we're talking about actually doing a liner, maybe in a different location, that's part possibly, something like that. But I said it'll be future items.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Scott, Police Committee.
Police Committee met on July fourteenth at five PM. Not a whole lot going on. They were all getting ready for last night's wonderful national night out. I thought it was a good turnout.
It was awesome, yes.
Yeah, everything was displayed very nicely. Meth light flew in and, and I got a chance to meet Sheriff Barrett. Seems like a very nice man and very excited to be sheriff. Don't know why. He said, anything we need out here, just let him know. So he's a big supporter of Western Dane County and, and what Mayso and Black Earth are doing. There were some car thefts. There are the car theft concern mainly in Wanakee. There was a, talked about property maintenance. There've been some properties let go and that's being addressed. As of July first, the order expired with registration of cars. They weren't enforcing registration. But as of July first, if you're not registered, make sure you are because they're not going to give you a pass anymore. We reviewed speed board data. That's still being a very, that's a very good tool just for us to see what's going on where and how fast people are going. We added a feature to the police committee meeting. We asked if the deputies would share, you know, positive experiences of, or unusual or, you know, just some, when they pull somebody over and they think it's an unusual stop or, you know, it's a good, it's just a way to lighten up the, the meeting. And Deputy Vanny shared a couple of positive stories. There's active shooter training is, is being set up. AED training will be September twenty-eighth. If anyone wants to learn how to use those boxes that are all over the place, you know, I don't think hardly anybody knows how to use them or get into them or.
Yeah, we had, yeah.
You know, I think most of it is just getting by the shock of the fact that you have to do it, you know.
What, what's that training?
Uh, that's the twenty-eighth of September, I believe. And Coffee with the Cop is going to resume on, I believe, the tenth?
The ninth?
The ninth.
We do September ninth?
September ninth. Coffee with the Cop is going to start up again. And, hmm, let's see, we, we need a control key to fix the back door. And Vanny's going to be double checking what the county has. And that was about it. Our next meeting is August eighteenth at five PM.
All right. Questions for Scott? All right. Any other business that may be brought before the board for future agenda?
Just the referendum on four-eye.
Okay.
So we can do a vote on that?
And that's going to be.
There's a process we have to go through. I believe there'll be a resolution to go on that.
Yeah.
I'll bring that all in. But for two here on the agenda, it needs the majority vote of the board to put anything on the agenda, right?
Well, it takes, it takes at least two people to put on, and I agree with it, so.
Yeah, Public Works wants that rule.
Yeah, the committee actually.
Public Works actually, you know, approved it to bring it to the full board, so.
So then we, we shouldn't blame like Norm Han and some of these people that asked, so.
Norm Han, what?
Norm Han.
Oh.
Any, anything else based that for future agenda?
We still have to hear those other two things, right? The Cahill.
The what?
Coming from last. The Cahill, blah, blah, blah. Two things didn't make it, right, for this month?
The Raldis?
Yeah. See my other job.
Well, we didn't have the language in that.
Raldis, yeah, no.
It's not ready to be on it because it don't have the legal language.
And then there's one more thing, right?
Is that just waiting on, yeah, legal?
Yeah. He's got it now. Um, requesting parameters, parameters for operators licenses, insurance, issuance, sorry. Requesting parameters for operator licenses issuance.
This is in regards to serving alcohol?
Yeah, it's like the candidates for it. Can we make some policy about not just giving it to anybody that they have to be in good standing? And what does good standing mean?
You did bring that up. Did somebody else also want it on the?
Yeah, I think that was going to go to Police Committee.
On last month's agenda, it didn't make it to this month's agenda. So it already needs to go. I mean, to be voted on again, it would need to because it was already voted on once.
It was brought up, but was it actually an agenda item?
Yep.
No, but I mean, the changing and, and making, no, no, no. The changing and making rules or what people think was not on the agenda. It was approving was on the agenda, right? What was the agenda item listed as?
Last month, there was a request for future agenda items and it was brought up to have a policy discussion on.
Yeah, that was not on the agenda last month, but policy was not.
Correct, because it was asked to be on.
Asked to be on for this month.
Yeah.
Two people approved it.
Two people approved it?
Yes, last month then. So.
Who would have did it? I don't remember.
You would, yeah.
I didn't approve it. I didn't think.
No, I, I, I seconded.
You did.
Just because, yeah.
Okay.
Should that go to police or isn't that a police?
It should be, right? I mean.
Police aren't going to make the decision on the operator's license.
Right. They make the background check, the lie.
They already do background check. So I have some samples.
If you deny something other than illegal, among everybody else, they get sued.
Yeah, you got to be careful.
You got to be very careful.
I do have some samples. I've been pulling from other communities, so I'll have a say.
Okay. All right.
It just needs to be established.
Anything else?
Uh, next date, the meeting day?
Yep. Meeting announcements, September board meeting will be.
Yeah, because we would go with the dates that I'm Labor Day. Whatever you guys, but Labor Day is on the sixth. We would have met on the seventh. I'm still good with that if you all are, but.
I might have a conflict on.
We're, we're closed here on Monday, but it should have on your board stuff.
I'm going, it's the seventh time.
What date?
September seventh.
That's the first Tuesday.
Make either the seventh or the eighth work.
I prefer the seventh. You're not looking.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I have parent teacher stuff that night. I have to double check, but.
Is there parent teacher stuff there? How did you see that already? But I don't, I haven't seen a parent teacher thing yet.
We take our kid up to Children's Community School in Montoro.
Oh.
And so it's like.
It's his first light painted.
He's going into three K, so it's the whole light. And your kid, kid's going to school for the first time, is what you expect.
Okay, so we're seeing with the seventh or?
Everybody's good with seven, I'm good.
I'm good.
And I have personnel on here with the resignation of Jeannie. I would, must have a discussion about that position.
Okay.
So that's, that would be discussed at next board meeting or?
You can do it at the next board meeting.
It could be, we can have a conference discussion on personnel.
Let's do that.
Yeah, I don't see a reason to.
So we're going to take care of that on the seventh as well.
Yep.
I move we adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, we got to sign the resolution and.
See you, Terry.
Yeah.
See you, Terry.
And Mary, did I say the dates for the next EMS meeting?
Um, no.
Nine-nine, yeah.
And.
Cobra fourth is the next.